will be accepted for that item. So I will now call this meeting, June 23, 2001, Yuba City Planning Commission Meeting to Order. May I please have roll call?
Chairwoman Blake?
Here.
Vice Chairwoman Silman? Commissioner Schaefer?
Here.
Commissioner Adams?
Here.
Commissioner Brookman?
Here.
Commissioner Dale?
Here.
Commissioner Doscher?
Here.
Thank you. Commissioner Adams, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance of our flag? Thank you.
Salute. Pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. So this brings us to our public comment on items that is not on the agenda. Do we have any written requests from the public on any items not on the agenda currently?
There are no written requests.
Thank you. And I see no appearance of interested citizens. So we'll move to Agenda Item Three, which is the, if any planning commissioners have any interest in modifying the agenda. And as you know, Item Number Six has been pulled for this evening. Yes, Commissioner Adams?
Just out of respect for Zoom residents that are possibly attending, was there anyone that had any comments from afar?
No, there are no comments specific to Agenda Item Six?
Well, no, for appearance of interested citizens.
Right, we asked that, so, no, still no.
Oh, did you? I'm sorry.
That's okay. All right. So let's look at, did the, approving the minutes from May 26, 2021. There are no modifications necessary. I'll look for a motion for approval.
Move for approval.
Thank you, Commissioner Doscher.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Doscher?
Yes.
Commissioner Dale?
Yes.
Commissioner Brookman?
Yes.
Commissioner Adams?
Yes.
Commissioner Schaefer?
Yes.
Chairwoman Blake?
Yes. Thank you. So we'll move on to Agenda Item Number Five, Consideration of an 18-Month Time Extension for Tentative Subdivision Map, 19-03. Staff report, Ben, please.
So I'm going to turn this over to Ashley.
Thank you, Ashley.
So my new planner, Ashley Potocznik, is going to do the presentation, and so I'll trade places with her.
Good evening, everyone. So this item before you is for subdivision map 1903, request for a time extension.
Oh, that was my technical area there. It's probably like, I twisted the helper and I turned the power button.
It's not a big deal.
I'm sure.
Thought that I did. It's like, oh, no. So, this is for the subdivision map 1903. They have an extension request. So, a little bit of history. In 2018, the applicant submitted an application for subdivision map 1903 to divide a 5.73-acre parcel. And it was approved by the Planning Commission in June 2019, and then the City Council respectfully approved in 2019. And now, this month, we have the extension request. So the location of this property is just north of Bridge Street and west of Walton Avenue. And they have, it was approved for four different zone districts to be in that subdivision. R1, so single-family, two-family residential, R2, as well as one multifamily parcel, and one lot for commercial office. This is the map that was approved. And then also, we can see the land use designation that was approved, as well as the zoning. So you can see that there are four different land uses that were approved. Public Works and Planning have reviewed the conditions of approval, and everything still seems valid. And so per our municipal code, they are basically allowed to have an extension, and now they're requesting that. So our recommendation is for the Planning Commission to approve an 18-month extension for this subdivision map 1903 pursuant to our municipal code. Any questions?
Thanks, Ashley. Any questions, Commissioners?
I have a question to the Chair. It's not germane to my decision, but I'm just curious, what's been the delay that's held them up in needing this 18-month extension?
I don't know exactly the reasoning behind the delay, but I know that Public Works is looking at the improvement plans now. So things are moving, they just didn't move quite as quickly as maybe.
Has it been more on the city's side, or more on their side?
No, we didn't receive them until just recently, the last few months.
Oh.
So I'm assuming COVID had something to do with it. But, no.
Awesome, thank you.
No questions, thank you.
Commissioner? Lemon, do you have any questions? Any other questions? All right. So we will look for a motion for approval for this extension.
Take a motion on Item Number Five, consistent with staff's recommendation on this item.
Thank you.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Doscher?
Yes.
Commissioner Dale?
Yes.
Commissioner Brookman?
Yes.
Commissioner Adams?
Yes.
Commissioner Schaefer?
Yes.
Chairwoman Blake?
Yes. Thank you. Extension granted. So, public hearing item, Agenda Item Number Six has been pulled from consideration based on a need for further evaluation. So no staff report will be provided at this time. Do you have anything to add to that? Ben?
For the, for the Commission, no. We noticed it, and really what we're looking at is, I'm working with the property owner and figuring out steps forward regarding the density, which might lead to not just a rezone, but also a general plan amendment. And so, so we were taking a step back. We're trying to figure out the strategy with him, and either, either if he's going to proceed on his own with the general plan amendment and the environmental work associated with it, or if we're going to tie that into the city's process, because the city's looking at doing that through our housing element. So our housing element's coming through to look through, changing some of those properties to R2, to R3. And so, so really, we're taking a step back due to the density that he might want, that we need for the general plan consistency. And so we'll, either it's going to, the way, right now, I'm guessing it's either going to just stop, and it's going to be changed through the city's update, or he'll proceed forward on his own timeline, but we'll have a general plan amendment and a rezone, where we'll notice it a little different, then come back.
Ashley, due to the fact that this information went to surrounding residents and public, are there any public questions or comments in the Zoom Q&amp;A at this time?
There are no questions.
All right, thank you. Thank you for the update. We'll see this item soon. So that brings us to a very exciting item, I think, the outdoor dining ordinance adoption. So I'll ask Ben for a staff report.
So great, you know, I am really excited about this one, too. I mean, you know, it kind of came quick and furious here on our side. Ashley's helped me, I'm working with Brayden's office, to kind of put it together and implement in the code. But it's one of these good things for the city. It doesn't get a lot of public feedback, but I think it's good for the city long-term, because there, there hasn't been, besides Pluma Street, we don't have an established outdoor policy. And so, a lot of stuff has happened, hodgepodge, or not really officially. And so with this, what we're proposing tonight is to specifically put the terms of the outdoor dining and how that affects businesses into the code. And so then there's clear, clear direction on how we handle that going forward, which I think is, is really good. It's really good for the city to have that option, and restaurants to be able to plan on it. So I'll kind of power through it. It's pretty self-evident of what we're talking about here, but I'll try to work through some of the details that were in the staff report. And so so we got a little background slide. August 2008, City Council approved a resolution which included outdoor dining design standards along Pluma Street. And so this was the first time we actually memorialized something. And Pluma Street, at that time, it was really, it was just being constructed. And so to put it in perspective, it was the city's new baby. They just put a lot of money into redeveloping that area, and there was this goal, they have this flex zone, kind of an area out front that would enable pedestrian traffic, be usable. And it never really came to fruition, I think, just because of the traffic, and partly because of some of the rules they put in. And some, some of the rules in the outdoor dining policy that they put in for Pluma Street are just, they're too much. I mean, when you really get into it, it's wrought iron furniture, it has to be clothed napkins, it has to be put up and taken down every day. And it was, it's just not feasible. And so then what happened over time is you'd have some that kind of worked their way in and asked for forgiveness with Sopa Thai in the Justin's Kitchen, and everybody wants it, and everybody wants those businesses to thrive, but it never quite matched the code. And so that was the 2008 Pluma Street corridor. May 2017, Sopa Thai sidewalks. So at that time, Arnaldo, sitting in my chair, he actually brought forward Sopa Thai, because the way the code read, it also didn't have much flexibility in it, where it had to be approved by the City Council. And so it couldn't be approved at the, at the staff or director level, or even the Planning Commission. It had to go to City Council and have a full-blown review of the, of the furniture and the proposed use. So it was kind of burdensome. And then March 2020, COVID, all things COVID, you know, to help the businesses with implementing the new guidelines, as they were the ever-changing guidelines, with the emergency ordinance enacted, the city put out a policy that basically what we did is we took some of the terms from, that we've worked through with Pluma Street, and then also some of the requirements that we had for encroachment permit on the sidewalks, and we put out a policy that, that worked through allowing these businesses to operate on a temporary basis through this outdoor dining policy. And so, as many of you, everybody's seen, you know, the makeshift tents and everything else that kind of came up over time, and then some, but, but with that, a lot of people really like it, and a lot of people want to keep that as an option for their business. And so the concern is, is the city's getting ready to rescind the emergency ordinance. And so before we rescind the emergency ordinance and technically taking that outdoor dining, making that out of compliance with the zoning code, we're pushing to bring this outdoor dining policy and codify it. So then that way, when we rescind the emergency ordinance, everybody has a process on how to proceed. And so, and what we're looking at is, the communication is key. We're going to route this through the chamber, the DBA, and then to the businesses as much as we can for any, any feedback. But I think we've, we've developed, I believe, a pretty thorough and detailed code. And so, so local outdoor dining, Ashley put together a few great shots here, you know, Sopa Thai and over at the brewery and the Pete's, you know, there's even qualified somewhat, even though that was, that came through with the initial construction. And so, just some great examples, even with our hot weather or different times, people are able to make it work. And so, through the code, I could go real specific, or hit the highlights from some of the stuff that was in the staff report, but we have some limits on it, and we have some processes for it. But in general, any sort of structures, any sort of tents, since they're not, since those are considered temporary, those would go through our building permit process. So really what this is looking at is for somebody to put up a table and an umbrella. If they want to get more serious than that, they need, you know, for a certain square footage. If they want to get more serious with a structure or some sort of permanent, you know, facility, more than that, then they need to come through and work. We've worked through this dining, we've worked through the specifics of this regarding the timelines and how big it could be, but we would follow our standard processes regarding building permits, you know, fire codes, and coming through Planning Commission depending on the size and design if it triggers those. And so, so with that, I'd be really happy to answer some questions. I, you know, the, we put some timelines on there about the use. I mean, really, it was trying to be flexible, but also provide some options regarding the 7 to 10, and then up to 11 on Thursday, Friday, and Saturday night within the residential districts. And then there's some, there's some mechanisms in there regarding, just to make sure everybody's being a good neighbor and keeping it clean and taking care of it. And so with that, what I'm asking the Commission tonight is to initiate, so first, I'm asking the Planning Commission to formally initiate the outdoor dining ordinance adoption. So per the city's municipal code, technically the Planning Commission or the City Council needs to initiate the process. So that's Item A. And then we're going to conduct a public hearing for the public, if there's any input on it, and then adopt a resolution recommending to the City Council that they approve the ordinance. And so with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ben. So we'll begin with any questions Commissioners have, because I'm certain there are some. So let's begin at this end with Commissioner Schaefer.
Sure. So, question for you, Ben. You had mentioned something during your presentation there about the, this is going to be just dealing with, this ordinance you're looking for is really dealing with more of just putting up a canopy over a cup, over a table. Is that correct?
No, I, and I shouldn't be nonchalant with it. And what this, this gives the person the option, so when, worst case is the way, I'm thinking about it right now, is that somebody, when they come in and build a new building, they have to build a building, and they have to provide so much parking based on the number of tables or the square footage of the building. What this allows, this theoretically worst case, not that everybody wants to eat in a parking lot, but technically, they could take up portions of their property up to this amount of square footage, and to, and they could take up some of that parking to utilize outdoor dining space. Most likely, you'll probably see it in the open air, opener, the areas that are more open, that people enjoy eating at. But technically, on a worst-case level, yeah, theoretically, what this is doing, it's allowing them to use some of their parking for outdoor dining.
That's right.
But they couldn't put a tent over it, or they couldn't build a structure over it without going through our processes.
That was getting to. I was just curious what they were doing about the parking ratio, because if somebody came and built new, they'd have to have so many parking spots per square footage, and if these, you know, restaurant owners are going to use part of their parking, they're obviously not going to meet their parking codes anymore. And is there going to be a waiver of that for these restaurant owners, or, and to some maximum extent of waiver?
So it, so on this, it's based on the maximum allowed square footage, and they still need to meet all their code requirements regarding ADA access.
Right.
But there is some flexibility with this code, allowing them to utilize a portion of that required amount. But there is a stipulation that it can't create off-site. You can't, I don't know how I worded it exactly, but there's some discretion at a staff level, or if that, if we're getting phone calls from the neighbor that they're using the neighbor's parking lot too much, that then the staff could communicate those, and they need to rectify it, or we could terminate the zoning permit.
You said there's only maximum amounts of space they can do this for outside?
Up to 1,000 square feet.
1,000 square feet of their parking area?
Yep.
And?
1,000 square feet of outdoor dining.
From an occupancy standpoint, I'm assuming that, you know, because fire code obviously has a maximum occupancy on the inside, that doesn't get affected by serving people in these dining areas outside from the fire code standpoint?
You know, I've seen these things get pretty creative, and so they're definitely, so there's the caveat that they need to meet all codes, all fire, building, lighting, you know, electrical, ADA, building codes. And so, I mean, they shouldn't, you know, if somebody has an outdoor table on there, but I, but we would definitely review it. The individual departments would review it based on what they're proposing, and if it would affect.
So you're saying, to the extent that some patron uses the outdoor, that's, that's one space that would be considered for the inside, so that's less on the inside they can do at the same time?
No, I'm not saying that. But I'm just saying, without seeing what they're actually proposing, we're telling them in this code that they need to meet all rules. And then we would look at each one to see, you know, what they're proposing on how that affects it.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Commissioner Adams?
So really, that plays into my question quite nicely. I've experienced where some of them have blocked off handicap stalls. And I know that ADA, you know, is about access, it talks about how to put the handicap stalls in, but I don't know if it addresses the fact that we don't want those to be blocked. Having a father in a wheelchair, I've ran into this multiple times with the outdoor dining, where they've taken away the handicaps stall and have not replaced it or made a temporary location for that to occur. So I would like to know that there's some stipulation there where they aren't allowed to, to block handicap parking.
Yeah, absolutely. And so that was probably, that was kind of part of the COVID fallout. Everybody, everybody did it first, then asked for forgiveness. And then, of course, they want it close to the business because the functionality to the kitchen and to the servers, and so those were the first to go. And so after the fact, we'd have the building department, fire department go out there, work with them, try to get them to shift it over. But, and this is where this code is really the benefit, is because it defines a specific process. They need to come in, before they do it, they need to show us their layout. We need to, well, they pay a $50 zoning clearance fee that will be memorialized, that basically planning staff, building staff, fire will review it, will put those comments in there that, you know, if that's the proposed location, the ADA needs to be either relocated in accordance with meeting building codes and have that. And, and so that's definitely a highlighted portion of the code that calls that out.
Commissioner Brookman? Thank you. Commissioner Doscher?
I have to, ma'am.
Thank you. All right, so with that, we'll go ahead and entertain a motion to initiate an outdoor dining ordinance for adoption. He said public hearing after?
Yeah, we could do it, that's a good way to do it. We'll do A, and then we'll do the B, open the public hearing.
Okay. The public hearing for the resolution.
So we have a, so the item on the consideration right now is A.
A, yes. Do you want a public hearing for A?
Nope.
No, okay, thank you.
A motion to initiate?
Yep.
Okay. So a motion to initiate the ordinance?
Thank you.
Request.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Roll call vote.
Commissioner Doscher?
Yes.
Commissioner Dale?
Yes.
Commissioner Brookman?
Yes.
Commissioner Adams?
Yes.
Commissioner Schaefer?
Yes.
Chairwoman Blake?
Yes. Thank you. Okay, so now we're going to go ahead and open a public hearing for, to consider an adoption of a resolution to recommend to City Council to adopt an outdoor dining ordinance. Do I have any individuals, seeing that there's none in the audience, do we have any individuals online that would like to comment or have a question concerning this agenda item?
There are no comments.
All right, well, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the Commissioners. Any additional questions prior to looking for a motion for the adoption of the resolution?
I do.
Okay.
I do have one through the Chair. Are we going to have any landscape requirements around this as well? Are?
There was no landscaping, Ashley, unless, you know, unless I missed it. I don't believe, I mean, there's, there's landscaping requirements with the building.
Right.
But no landscaping with the, I think we have some stuff about the furnishings.
You did, yes.
Lands, they could be landscaped pots, but it's not specifically requiring it.
Okay. That's the only question that I had.
Okay.
We would love to see landscaped stone pots.
Yeah.
And try to work, you know, that's definitely the push, you know, we're trying not to mandate, everybody's got to have nice stuff, but we, you can find that balance where it's feasible to do and have, represent the city well.
Yeah, or at least have it be an item that you could add into it.
Yeah.
Yeah, because if you're in a hardscape area, you want to make it feel inviting, you know, and you're in a back parking lot.
Yeah, yeah. I, I'm curious, yeah, just how it will work out exactly. I, I don't think anybody enjoys eating in a parking lot. And so, how they transform some of these areas, and they're really site-specific. But I know the people like at IHOP really love that space in between the chamber there. But, but yeah, sitting out in front of Kuhhan Luke's is not really a pleasant experience. So I don't quite know how they'll, they'll transform it.
We can use some general power around that, and having that as an item that is aesthetically reviewed, you know,
Yeah.
would be a nice addition to what you've drafted.
And so that is definitely with one of the items, furnishings and structure shall comply with the following. And so through that zoning clearance check, we'll, we'll work through that with them.
Through the Chair, I would, also, we have to remember that this is an option for, for restaurant patrons. I mean, they don't have to sit there. If they don't like the way it's decorated, they don't like the landscaping, just go inside the restaurant and eat. I mean, again, I don't want to put all these extra requirements on a restaurant owner, that they have to put all these plants and make it look beautiful. I mean, people have an option, and that's what it is. It's just an option. They can go inside if they want. So, let's just keep that in mind, that's all.
Yes, and the flexibility that you have afforded our business owners, I think, is great. And the ability, you know, for our businesses to determine if they want to, you know, continue that outdoor opportunity or not. Now that we can all go back in safely. And not have to socially distance. All right. Well, with that, fellow Commissioners, we'll look for a motion to approve the resolution adoption.
I'll make a motion to recommend that we adopt the resolution recommending the City Council, the City of Yuba City, adopt an ordinance to update the Yuba City Municipal Code to allow for continued use of outdoor dining by adding Article 49, Chapter 5 of Title 8, and amending Section 8-5.6102 of Article 61 of Chapter 5 of Title 8 of the Yuba City Municipal Code.
Phew, very well.
Lots of numbers.
Second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Doscher?
Yes.
Commissioner Dale?
Yes.
Commissioner Brookman?
Yes.
Commissioner Adams?
Yes.
Commissioner Schaefer?
Yes.
Chairwoman Blake?
Yes. Thank you, and thank you for the work on that. Could tell it was a quick turnaround, but it's timely and essential, so thank you. So we'll go ahead and look to Ben for future agenda items.
All right. So right now, July 14 meeting, we're planning on canceling it, and the 28th is questionable. And so most likely, that will be canceled, too, just on the noticing and what we have brewing. We don't, July is looking like I'm giving you guys the month off. And so I'll keep you posted at the 28th. I'll know here shortly if the 28th is going to be on or not. But the 14th, plan on that one being canceled.
Okay.
For, for future agendas, what we have brewing on the planning side, we just received a new parcel, a subdivision map. So it's called the Hinson Map. And so it's a 95-unit, single-family residential, it's a single-family residential subdivision with nine commercial office parcels on the front. It's on Highway 20, north side of Highway 20, between Hooper and El Margarita, kind of where that old walnut hauling place used to be. So pretty much across the street from the Hooper Ranch, that, that area along the Highway 20 front and back. So that's working through. We have a Lincoln East specific plan, and so there's been a lot of discussion. There's some activity down Bog Sandborne area with some, with some development where there's a proposed annexation to bring this, this piece of property in a residential subdivision into the, into the city. It's within the Lincoln East specific plan, a specific, a specific plan that was developed early 2010, 2012, timeframe after the recession. And so what's going on is, is that plan, it was constructed in a what's going on is, is that plan, it was constructed in a vacuum. It was initiated based on a development before the recession, which was a large landowner that was going to build it in a different way. And then what happened was when they fell out with, through the recession, the city finalized that plan. They took it, they took the plan on and spent a lot of money on that plan to work through it. But what's happened is that in that vacuum with it only, and the city took that on with the anticipation that it would help development when the recession ended, that it would be show ready, kind of ready to come through for the environmental documents and meet that codes. But now that 10, 12 years have passed, there's just, it's a hindrance due to design standards, due to, you know, some of the sequoia stuff regarding environment, you know, agriculture mitigation, Swanson Hawk through the, also through development, terms of the development agreement and growth policies, and then also an affordability component that was set at 10% at that time that didn't match. And so what the city's looking at is, is taking, rescinding that Lincoln East specific plan, keeping the zoning and the general plan, land uses, and then looking at the projects on an individual basis. Because the, the structure and the phasing and the, and the financing don't match up with what the plan had. Because originally it was going to be built from the north to the south. And what's happening now is that 12 years later, we have new master plans for the water and sewer. We have the near-term growth wanting to occur right on the edge of, of the city into the plan area. And so it just doesn't match with that plan anymore. So we're trying to figure out how to, how to handle that. You know, we got a plan, but, but nobody likes the plan anymore. But how do we cherry pick the zoning, the land use, and then also some of the environmental documents that were considered with it? So it's more to come from that. Housing element approval, we, the housing element was submitted to the state HCD. And so most likely we'll be bringing that back to you in August as recommendation for approval to the City Council. And so there'll be some more info on that. We just received a, just today, the Calvary Christian Church use permit extension. They came in today to extend that for the sixth time, and so we need to look at that. Yeah. And so I'm not quite sure what staff's feeling is on that one yet, but, but that came in today. And then also we got, the power market is resurrected, so they're on 20. They've just kind of come back to life with some noise studies and traffic studies on what their proposal was. So you might see some more action on that. You know, I'll just tie this into the next item with the, you know, and I would just say, you know, I sent out a, a department status report yesterday that I'll share, I'll, I'll share the email with the commissioners here when I get back to my desk. But we went through, kind of, I sent out kind of just the major items that you kind of sparked some interest in town. And so we, so as far as commercial building, we received the Burger King drive-through plans on Bog. We, Rayleigh's renovation, the Rayleigh's renovation, they're, they're, currently they're modifying to close one of the doors. But what's going on is I've talked to the property manager recently, and what they're wanting to do is split the Rayleigh's in the center in half or two-thirds it and bring in another store. And what they're telling me is it's a new national franchise. Coming to that area, they wouldn't share specifically who that is. They, they told me they promised I'd be super excited about it. But we'll see. So, so coming soon supposedly, hopefully it's not a Ross or something else they store to it.
Yeah, if he thinks we're super excited about a Ross.
Yeah, but we'll, we'll see. So they promised I'd be excited. And with that, what I'm excited about is that would trigger the facade improvements with Rayleigh's that we've kind of kicked down the road a little bit with DeeDee's. That hey, when you guys build the new storefront for this new franchise, you'll see some work along Rayleigh's and DeeDee's for the long nut frontage to try to tie it into some of the other stuff. What else is exciting? We got a truck yard on Garden Highway that's working through the process. We got McDonald's on Harder Parkway is getting a facelift. Plumas Street, signage, Plumas Point, new clothing store. So new clothing store in Plumas Point. Bridge Street, T-Mobile is doing a remodel on Bridge Street, the T-Mobile is. Grocery outlet's doing a remodel. And then we have the Colusa, the Chevron on Colusa Avenue is changing to a Sinclair. Hooper, Hooper Ranch master plan, we've approved the two model homes that should be coming soon. Dunn Ranch improvement, so that's the subdivision on Roeran Ranchero and Monroe. They're, they're getting ready to break ground here shortly. And so their, their improvement plans have been approved. They've bid it to a contractor named Lund Construction, and they're really fired up to get, get work moving here soon. So you'll see some dirt turning out there. And what's, what's happened with that is they've also spurred that Faith Court subdivision. There was a private subdivision to the east that was kind of a piece off the church. That looks like it's going to go. We're either trying to coordinate the contractor to go at the same time. And Rivers Edge Apartments on Lincoln Road, that's getting a lot of action. You'll probably see some, some future planning consideration on that regarding upping the units from 172 to 196. So they want to change a couple of buildings out from two-story to three-story. And then also establish a DA to memorialize the fees. And so that, that will be something that will come, that's coming to you hopefully as soon as August, but we'll see how that moves forward. Oh, gosh. I could, I could work through all of them or whatever you guys want to hear, but I'll send it over to you. The highlights, the Holiday Inn Express on Shasta, my understanding is they got financing. And so they're starting to kind of gear up and look towards putting a schedule together on that. I just had a meeting with Hilton to homes, Hilton, Hilton to suites. There's Hilton's, Home Two? Home Two Suites, Home Two Suites, yeah. And so there's a lot of interest right there on the vacant parcel north of Target. And so we'll see. They told me they're going to give me a site plan and start moving through, and so we'll see what happens there. Hobby Lobby pulled the permit. Supposed to be demo work pretty soon, so that's, that's moving forward. And then Ashley's favorite out of some of these is the new cookie place, Crumble, which is supposed to have these amazing cookies. It has, has pulled their permit, and they're supposed to be working to, to put that in place here pretty quick. And so with that, you know, I'd be happy to go into any other specifics that anybody has any questions with. But that's kind of the excitement that's going on.
I have a quick question for you, Ben, and two of them actually. The apartments on, was it Lincoln or?
Lincoln.
Lincoln there?
Yep.
As Ocho Pintes deal?
Yep.
And they, do they have a developer that's moving?
You know, they tell me they got three, but I, you know, I have seen as believing. So, but, but it seems like there's been a lot of renewed effort and with the market and the timing. And I've talked to a couple of the people that seem to be seriously interested in it, that they have some buyers that are interested.
Is this market rate?
Yes.
Interesting. And then are they doing anything with the old hospital there on, on Shasta, north of the 20, where Rideout used to be?
You know, I haven't heard anything about that lately. I know my understanding was they contacted with, with some folks to do an analysis to find out the highest, best use, if they were going to try to turn it into a parcel, market as apartments, turn it into apartments, or even back to single-family homes. And so, so I haven't seen anything solid, just some studies. They're trying to analyze it to see what they get unloaded as, it sounds like.
Thank you.
It's probably a knockdown and then what, what they could sell it for.
Any other questions, commissioners?
I just have a question on Walton. Well, actually it's Stabler on that side, Stabler and Star Drive, kind of the corner. I just noticed that some of the landscaping along there is.
Stabler and Star.
Is.
In front of the, getting rough is in front of the, I know they did a remodel on the west side.
Doctors offices?
Yeah, it's kind of the doctor's office corner and across the way there, I think there's a auto place maybe there and, but it's the frontage on actual Wal, on Stabler. And I just, I didn't know if those had design standards when those were put in, or if those were prior to. But it's just, it's just looking rough.
We could definitely look at it. I, I mean, it always.
I look at, you know, like the hometown, is it hometown lenders? And you have these, you know, this great landscape, and then all of a sudden it just, just kind of stops.
Yeah, yeah. It's always, it's always tough to keep, you know, you know, when we come through for the approval process, they're supposed to have 50% shading, they're supposed to do this, they're supposed to do that, 10-foot buffer landscape. But then if they kill it all, you know, once it's approved, it's, you know, I think I could go after them under a nuisance code at a certain point. But it gets, it starts getting a little gray, you know, definitely if they're out of compliance with the shade, we could, we could kind of poke them and do it. But it's always trying to work with businesses to keep their stuff looking good, or at least to a minimum standard, especially on Stabler. So I'll have, I'll have my side and go take a look at it.
It's like they agreed to it when they built it, so it's like, let's.
Yeah. It just, what do you do afterwards? You know, and so they kill it, they like it dead, and so am I going to, you know, so I threaten to fine them, it's just hell.
Do we need to beef up our agreements when we put them?
There's no agreement. I mean, they agreed to it, they put it in when it's done.
Yeah, when they're standards that they have to put it in and keep it alive. I mean, do we need to add that to the?
Well, you know, it's just, it's just code enforcement, right?
Right.
And so where do you start and stop? And does, does the, do people have the appetite to actually enforce it? That's where, you know, because we like to be business friendly, we like to educate them. I have no problem meeting out there, talking to them and doing it. And a certain level for sure on, on parkways, gateways. But it falls into the code enforcement, which it's, it's uphill battle.
Right. I just know when we approve those things, we approve them in good faith that they will maintain it.
Yeah.
We don't approve it for them to put it in and then rip it out, or let it die and then take it out. So I mean, it kind of goes both ways. So that's just my opinion.
I totally understand it. And so the kicker is just trying to make them, on private property, put it back. Even once they have the entitlement and it's built and power's on.
Commissioner Brookman, do you have? No, okay. No, all is well. All right. Thank you. And, and no disrespect to Ross by any means. I don't, you know, just in case it's out there.
Deal every day, right?
So, does that conclude the director's report?
That concludes.
Thank you. Okay, so report of actions of the Yuba City Planning Commission. Any commissioners have any updates on any items that they would like to share at this time? Otherwise, Chief Dasher, do you have a report from Sutter County Planning Commission?
It's in the deal.
Thank you, thank you.
There's three items that came up at our last meeting last week. One was the ever-present truck yard on Berry Road adjacent to Berry School. That's been out of compliance since 2017. Never made any attempt to come into compliance. It's gone through the court process, it's gone through the citing process. There's no indication on the part of the owners that they're willing to come into compliance at all. There was a stipulation that they showed good faith by coming in with no more than 15 trucks. County went out and counted the trucks a couple of days before the hearing. There were 60 trucks out there. So that didn't, that didn't bear well. Bottom line was the Planning Commission shut them down for a reclassification of their zoning and also for their use permits and whatnot. So where that goes from now, besides the Board of Supervisors, I'm not aware. There was a application for 150,000 square foot storage facility. It was on the county line. It's currently zoned Ag 80, and the zoning does not permit that type of facility there. The applicant was involved with trying to comply with the environmental regulations for that piece of property. And then it got way too expensive without any kind of a guarantee on return of investment. So they stopped the environmental reports until they could find out the lay of the land, for lack of something else to say. We were surprised when we saw a blow-up of the area, that it was probably within walking distance of two other storage facilities, two other major proposed residential build-out areas in Plush County. And a storage warehouse that is probably 100 yards away. So speaking by myself alone, it obviously needs to be rezoned and let this person have a chance down there. So we gave, we didn't give him instruction, but it was obvious by the way that the Planning Commission talked at the county that we'd be more than willing to reconsider his application once he went to the Board of Supervisors and had them look at the entire picture and change the zoning of that property. And if he'd come back to us, and that would give him some type of surety that he wouldn't be spending his money in vain for the environmental documents.
Right.
And then the rest of it was cleanup language for the county codes, nothing significant.
Okay. Interesting. A lot of truck issues, aren't there?
Ever truck issues.
Lot of chatter about the live oak community as well. Has that come before you?
Not yet.
Not yet. It's coming though, right?
Yes, it is.
Yeah. I see a lot of public comment at the board meetings about that specifically, so.
Is that a truck on the, on the 99?
Yeah, yeah. Thank you for that update.
You're welcome, ma'am.
So with that, we'll adjourn tonight's meeting and see you perhaps in August, maybe the 28th of July.
Did County Council have anything they wish to add, or?
I'm sorry, council, did you have anything to add?
Just my usual, if you have questions for me about anything related to the municipal code or anything from tonight's meeting, feel free to ask me. If you had a question, Commissioner, about code enforcement, I do a lot of code enforcement. So if you have questions about the mechanisms through which, you know, municipal code as to things like dead vegetation get enforced, very easy one for me to answer. But other than that, I'm here to answer questions mostly about the agenda or, you know, really anything you have that's related to Planning Commission business.
Thank you. And thank you, Chief, Commissioner Dasher, for reminding me. And my apologies, I sometimes forget you're there on the screen. Have a good evening. Thank you. Thank you all.